Once we get the on-air sign, we'll get started and appreciate you guys' attendance. All right, looks like we've got it. So, good evening. Tonight is March 24th, 2022. At this time, we will have an invocation by Chris Stevens from the Xenia YMCA, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our own Councilman Cody Branham. If you guys would please rise.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, I come before you as a humble servant, knowing that without you, we can accomplish nothing. I thank you for our officials who are not afraid to call upon you in an open forum and to allow you to guide their decisions. We ask that they seek your wisdom, that hearts, ears, eyes will be open to your desires for this community and our nation. Your word is clear that a house divided cannot stand, so I ask that you would bring common ground and compromise where needed, that we would be reminded that our battles are not with flesh and blood, and that personal biases have no place in our decisions, but that our decisions are based on a desire to do our best in your eyes for the people that we serve. Ask a special blessing over the men and women who are serving in our armed forces and in civilian capacities where every day their lives are on the line. Ask your protection and peace of mind as they diligently serve to preserve the peace for all. I pray for favor in every workplace represented here. May we stand boldly as your ambassadors and be a light in the dark places. Father God, when it's all said and done, may you and you alone be glorified in our thoughts and in our actions. May we be reminded that your mercies are new every day. May we begin each new day looking for ways to serve you and to be a blessing. We thank you for your presence here and your guidance to stay and moving forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much, Chris Stevens, Xenia YMCA. Thank you, Councilman Branham, for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel. Here, Councilman Stevens.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilman Branham.
Here.
Councilman Dean.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
President Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Earlier today, I did receive a message from Councilman Levi Dean that he is ill. So, at this time, I will make a motion to excuse Councilman Dean and ask for a second. Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for the March 10th, 2022 regular meeting. This time, I will entertain the minutes into record and ask for a motion to approve. Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion, corrections on the minutes before us? Quite a few pages, too. So, thank you, City Clerk, for that. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is opportunity for a special presentation. There is none scheduled for tonight. Moving on to audience comments. This is the portion of our meeting where the public is able to engage council by coming to the podium. Give us your name, address for the record. Limit your comments to two to three minutes, please. And while we're waiting on that, City Clerk, do we have any emails tonight that we need to share? No. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone want to come forward? Okay. We will move on to old business. First items, ordinance 2022-06. This is a second reading and also a public hearing. This is approving a major change to the planned unit development concept plan for right cycle estates that increases the number of planned single-family homes and decreases the planned commercial acreage. This was introduced by Vice President Herschel at our March 10th meeting.
I'll move for passage.
Thanks. Move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
A second, sir.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Okay. At this time, we do have an opportunity for a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing at this time. If anyone in our audience tonight would care to speak in favor of approving this planned unit development concept plan, this is your opportunity to come to the podium. Give us your name, address for the record, and please limit your comments to two to three minutes. Okay. At this time, if anyone would like to come to the podium and speak against the approving the major change to the planned unit development, this is your opportunity to come to the podium. Okay. Seeing no one come forward, at this time, I will close the public hearing and invite any of my colleagues. If you have any additional questions or concerns, keep it in mind, we do have a motion and a second. No comments. Okay. So, at this time, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item under Old Business is Resolution 2022 Letter L. This is a second reading. This is awarding multiple contracts for the provision of water distribution and sewer collection supplies to the city's Public Service Department for the year 2022. This was introduced at our last meeting by Councilman Branham.
Would like to move for passage, President?
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any discussion, questions, or concerns regarding the contract?
Council President, I would just like to say, great work on the Public Service Department by going and soliciting those three different distributors to get the best price, best thing for city of Xenia's residents' buck.
I would concur with that. Any other questions or comments? This time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item under Old Business is Resolution 2022M. This is also a second reading. This is establishing street lighting district number one and declaring the necessity of improving city streets and public ways within street lighting district number one for years 2023 through 2027. This was introduced by Vice President Herschel at our last meeting.
I'll move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any questions or concerns regarding the second reading? Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving along, we do have a robust agenda tonight, so thank you very much. Our next item is Resolution 2022 Letter N. This is a second reading. This is establishing street lighting district number two and declaring the necessity of improving city streets and public ways within street lighting district number two for the years 2023 through 2027. This was introduced by Councilman Branham at our March 10th meeting.
I would like to move for passage, please.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilman Branham. Do we have a second?
A second, sir.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any discussion, comments, or concerns regarding this? Okay, roll call.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 2022O. This is a second reading. This is granting a 50-foot wide permanent pipeline easement situated in part of the Regina Military Survey Number 387 to Veteran Energy Delivery of Ohio, doing business at Center Point Energy. This is introduced by Councilman Dean at the March 10th meeting. In his absence, I will move for passage and ask for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Seconded by the Vice President. Any further discussion or concerns on this easement? Okay. Not seeing any, so we'll get a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our last item under Old Business is Resolution 2022 Letter P. This is a second reading and authorizing the middle of an application for Green County Community Investment Grant for the Community Steel Academy Building Project located at 135 East Church Street. This was introduced by Councilwoman Dean at our March 10th meeting.
I'd like to move for passage, please.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Branham. This time, I'll ask any of my colleagues if they have any questions, concerns regarding the second reading.
Uh, yes, sir. Just wanted to say that I think there were four or five applicants, and the Steam Academy had the best application.
All right. Thank you very much. So noted, for those that are watching, if you didn't hear that, there were about four to five applications presented to the city, which felt at this time, the Steam Academy was the award of that recipient. Thank you, Councilman Stevens, for bringing that up. And any other comments or questions? We have a gentleman in the audience tonight representing that. Thank you for being here at this time. If there are no other questions or concerns, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is New Business. Our first item is a public hearing. This is the first public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDVG, Small Cities Program for 2022. Mr. Mayor, amend. It's all yours.
Thank you, sir. As a recipient of federal funding for the Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Program, the city of Xenia must meet citizen participation requirements, including conducting one public hearing to cover general aspects of the CDVG program and one project application-specific public hearing. These must occur before submission of any projects to the state of Ohio for the funding. We're scheduled at this time for the general CDVG public hearing. The second project application-specific public hearing is scheduled for May 12th of this year. That'll be at the regularly scheduled council meeting that evening. In 2022, the city is eligible to receive its biennial allocation grant and is also eligible to apply for competitive grant programs such as neighborhood revitalization, critical infrastructure, and targeted opportunity. Public is encouraged to request specific projects at any time or may contact our city's development partner with questions or suggestions. There will also be two informational sessions open to the public, one on March 30th at 4:00 p.m. and the other April 5th at 10:00 a.m. Both of these will be held here in the council chambers. All grant project requests should be submitted to the city by April 15th at 5:00 p.m. We're requesting conducting of the public hearing this evening, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. I would note that, as in stated, the informal informational session is scheduled for March 30th at 4:00 o'clock, if anyone has any questions regarding that. So, this is our first public hearing. So, at this time, I will open the floor for this public hearing and ask if anyone in the audience would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of the Community Development Block Grant Cities Program for 2022. Don't knock each other over to get up there. Just kidding. That's normal for us to not have that. So, at this time, if anyone would like to speak against the Community Development Block Grant, now's your opportunity to come to the podium. All right. And does any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns at this time before I close the public hearing? All right.
Wait. Mr. President, can I ask you a couple of questions here?
Yes, go ahead.
Sure. Brent, could you just briefly go over what types of projects these grants encompass? And also, I know we have the maximum amounts here that are identified. Are we a pass-through in terms of the recommendations of the grants? And then, who actually allocates these funds?
So, I'll start to answer that. I'm going to ask Ryan Baker, our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, to come up and help supplement. So, there are two different pots of money, if you will. There's our city allocation, which we then can determine vocally with the state's approval how we want to earmark those dollars. Local projects could be a part of that, as well as city ordered projects. Additionally, there are these competitive types of funding opportunities that we mentioned, the neighborhood revitalization, critical infrastructure, targeted opportunity. Those have individual sets of program requirements, specifications, guidelines, and that's a more statewide competitive process. Ryan, is there anything you want to supplement with that?
Well, they're, yeah, what, yeah. They are designed to specifically aid the low-to-modern income community. So, projects in certain neighborhoods, we've done Curb and Sidewalk for the little pass grant, or doing that in, they're along East Second. We've done some stuff on West Second in the past. So, it is neighborhood-specific, depending upon their demographics.
Right. So, are we, as a city, developing our own proposals for the last three competitive ones? Are we waiting for folks in the neighborhoods to come to us?
No, we do both. We have internal project discussion on a regular basis, and our next one's scheduled post any applications we receive.
Okay. And then, on the CDVG allocation, if I understood right, that $150,000 is allocated to us by the city, but we have to get, do we have to have approval by the state of any expenditures of those funds?
Correct. And part of that has to go towards a fair housing program.
Okay.
Yeah. And there are, you know, there's a range of different types of uses of those funds, recognizing that the grant total of the city used to get, it was somewhere in the ballpark of $300,000 to $400,000 per year. Over successive federal administrations, that money has dwindled down to the point that it's now, at least as what the state doles out, is about $150,000, $160,000 for a two-year period.
Right.
If I'm being very honest with you, the types of projects that typically would come forward, that doesn't go very far. And there's a fair amount of red tape, I think it's fair to say, associated with the administration of this grant. So, the position that we have taken in recommending projects to council over the last probably decade is that we focus on some simpler task public infrastructure projects, as Ryan mentioned, things like Curb and Sidewalk that bring broader, you know, public, you know, benefit to neighborhoods that could really use it. That really helps us with that red tape, because we have to go through a, you know, a competitive bidding process and a vetting process and a grant reporting process to administer those funds. And for the amount of dollars that we're talking about, it's, you know, minimizing some of the red tape is advantageous.
Each of the programs are very, have very, very narrow windows, are very, very specific requirements. You have to hit the three each one. You have to do for neighborhood revitalization, you have to have so many activities, but the activities must be limited to this. It's a very narrow window that you have to hit for some of those.
So, on the 30th and the 5th, will you be going over the criteria?
Yeah, we'll have handouts. We'll have some of the stuff that's provided by the states and the stuff we've developed internally that we'll have, that we can present to anybody. The last two we've had, unfortunately, we've had no one in attendance. The prior session, we did have quite a few people show up and ask questions.
Okay. And can you give us example of, so, two years ago, I'm assuming we either allocated or applied for, under the neighborhood revitalization, the targeted opportunity, critical infrastructure, were any awarded to us two years ago?
Not the last round.
No. We applied for a critical infrastructure, which was denied.
Okay. And then, can you just give us a sense of how that the allocation program was allocated two years ago, the types of projects that was?
It was a one singular project, and that's on East Second Street to do curb sidewalks and AT8 ramps between South Columbus and Main Street.
Sure. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other comments, questions from colleagues? All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing. The second public hearing is scheduled for May 12th, 2022. That will be a project application-specific public hearing. So... I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Stevens, do you have a comment?
Uh, no. I just wanted to note that with the Community Development Block Grant that Mr. Brady was here to speak in favor of, he is arrived tardy, but I want to make sure that his comments would be reflected in the record if he has anything written to submit.
All right. Thank you very much. One other question. Are nonprofits or public institutions like the schools, are they eligible for applying under this? Or who is eligible within the municipality?
I think it's pretty much just nonprofits.
No, nonprofits can. There are some requirements, as I recall, Ryan, correct?
Yeah, it's not for operating expenses.
Right, correct.
More capital-related projects, yeah. Are the public schools allowed to apply for these?
I don't know that.
I don't believe so. We would have to double-check, but I don't believe so. The reason I'm asking that question was we, I had some discussion with the superintendent at the last board meeting, and I didn't know whether, he had asked whether they would have an opportunity to apply for these as well, so.
And the only time I've ever seen these awarded for any kind of nonprofit was housing rehabilitation, actual physical rehab of structures. As Brent said, it's not, you can't use it for operating costs or anything along those lines. And that typically, with the nonprofit chip program, that there's some agreement with the city or county. So, it usually flows that way.
And the competitive programs, as Ryan said, have fairly specific eligibility criteria, both in terms of the types of entities and types of projects that would be awarded.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If I haven't done it already, at this time, I will close the public hearing and move on to our next item under New Business, which is ordinance 2022-07. This is titled an emergency. This is amending ordinance 2022-03 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. We are requesting additional appropriations for four purposes this evening. The first is an additional appropriation to cover cost of purchasing a one-ton dump truck. There's an agenda item that will be presented to council later this evening, requesting approval of that purchase. But the cost of that particular vehicle has gone up, as many costs have gone up here in the economy recently, and so we're requesting an adjustment to what had been originally set aside for the purchase of that unit, an additional $26,883. The other three requests this evening are actually all related to grant projects. The first is a request that council set aside dollars for the law enforcement recruitment grant, and we're requesting an amount of $32,450.28 for the grant portion, as well as the city match of $10,433.42, totally $42,883.70. Steph did have some conversation with council in a special session earlier this year about that particular grant. Another request is for an appropriation for dollars that are being awarded by the county for the demolition of the former former building. And so, we're requesting a total of $172,748 to be appropriated for that purpose, $122,748 being the grant portion and $50,000 being the local match. And then, finally, we're requesting an increase or an appropriation of $10,000 for fair housing expenses. And this is actually related to the public hearing that we just had. These are allocation dollars that would be used for those fair housing costs. We had originally budgeted all in one bucket. We need to get it in the correct place over into the operating piece, so we're requesting a $10,000 appropriation for fair housing be allocated tonight, this evening. If you've got any questions about the request for appropriations, I'd be more than happy to try to answer.
All right. Thank you. I'll open the floor for questions.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Stevens.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Finance Director, the grand total of $42,883.70, what kind of bang do we expect to get out of this book?
Well, the city manager might be a little better positioned to answer specifics about that grant and what all it would entail.
Yeah, I got to, the grant will allow us to launch what we've discussed with some council, with the members of council as our cadet program in the police division. Your call and conversations, we, there's a specific problem when trying to recruit young individuals for law enforcement, which is, in the state of Ohio, to be a licensed peace officer, you have to be at least 21 years of age. So, from that point of graduation high school, 18 to 21, we often lose a lot of recruits because they start down an alternate career path. And so, we feel this is an opportunity, largely with grant funds, to be able to provide a part-time employment status for local graduates, to be able to plug into law enforcement-related employment activities, to expose them to the environment, to help prep them for future service, and yet provide a means of income in the meantime. And so, we think this is a creative and unique opportunity to pursue that would help us with some of the recruitment issues that we've experienced, not unlike most jurisdictions with young folks who are just not interested in law enforcement. So, in particular, we want to target this to local Xenia students that want a sticker.
Very good. Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Yes, one question. So, Ryan, has the county approved their, the portion of the funding for the demolition? Or, because we have very specific dollar figures in terms of our breakout, so I'm assuming we must have had some negotiations, or they told us this is the percentage they would be willing to do out of that specific fund?
Yeah. My understanding is that that has been approved, but I'll let Brent take that as. Yeah, there were several projects, and again, my understanding is that the county has determined how they're allocating those amongst several projects.
Right, right. But we have some assurance that if we approve our portion tonight, that that matching portion has been approved by the county?
I have every reason to believe that's their intent. I cannot affirm that they've approved it.
Okay.
As in that they've approved a legislative measure to formally authorize it. I can't confirm that.
Authorization's been there, but they have not allocated it.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay, great. And if for any reason the county funding fell through, we have to come back before us if we wanted to pursue that on our own dollar, correct?
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Very good, very good.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. At this time, I will ask a motion to amend the ordinance 2022-03 for appropriations for current expenses and expenditures for this fiscal year ending December 31st of this 2022, and ask for a motion as an emergency.
Move as an emergency?
Thank you. Moved as an emergency by Mayor Mays. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Branham as an emergency. This time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel.
Aye.
Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item under New Business is ordinance 2022-08, titled an introduction. This is providing for special election on amendments to Articles 4, 9, 13, 14, and 15 of the Charter of the City of Xenia, Ohio. Yeah, got my new, my Roman numerics right.
Okay, be quick.
And the set election to be held on the same date and times as August 2nd, 2022. Madam Law Director.
Good evening. This is our second batch of charter amendments that came out of the report that the Charter of New Commission filed with you. As the council president said, this is 4, 9, 13, 14, and 15. Article 4 is city council. Article 9 is finances. Article 13 is general provisions. 14 and 15 were actually recommending the repeal of those articles, the only reason being the sections of those have been folded into Article 13. These amendments would be presented as one ballot item, much as we're doing in May. These were grouped together because we, again, the interplay between these three articles. For example, in the Article 4, city council, one of the things we refer to is the open meeting standards, which we put in Article 13 because they apply to the boards and commissions and councils. So, you have that interplay there. There's also a lot of interplay between the city council chapter and the finance chapter. So, that's why we grouped these the way we did. This would be our second batch, second. Now, I will say, I don't know if you saw the news today. They are putting off the election on May 3rd, but it's just for the federal primary. My understanding from the Secretary of State's office is they will be proceeding with local elections and local ballot items. So, our first batch of charter amendments will be going forward on May 3rd. If council approves this, this would be our second batch, and this would be on the August 2nd, special meeting. After our first batch, we now know what the Board of Elections wants our ballot to look like. So, you will note I did it differently this time than we did in the last ordinance. This would be a legal-sized sheet of paper, the actual ballot. It was shrunk down to fit in your packet, but we knew exactly how much space we had. shrunk down to fit in your pocket, but we knew exactly how much space we had. So the ballot, this is actually half the size of a legal sheet of paper. This is what we are recommending based on what we heard from the Board of Elections and the Ohio Secretary of State on our last ballot item. So this is what the ballot hopefully would actually look like. And then again, we prepared the Exhibit A. One of the things that is required under state law, that's required by the Ohio Secretary of State, if you do an abbreviated version, I don't think anybody wants to read a ballot this long. So we do the abbreviated version on the ballot, and then every polling place in the city will have a copy of this. This is a word-for-word outline of what we are suggesting, and the Charter Review Commission has suggested be changed. So we also provide this to the Board of Elections, so they have it for posting. It will go the same way at the May 3rd. If hopefully both the first two pass, then we will come back to council in June for placement of the last batch on the November ballot. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the Law Director?
Mr. President, just want to thank the Law Director again for her due diligence on this particular issue. We've been following the progress of this since 1989. So it has come to this. So we hope our citizens approve it and move us forward into the 21st century.
Thank you. Can I, yeah, I would comment. I did see the ballot language in the utility bills. So whoever put that together, thank you.
That's credit to Ms. Strongton.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our city clerk.
Vice President Urschel, I got a comment.
Do we anticipate then with the primary ballot items being moved to a later date, that this may be the only item on the ballot for Xenia municipality on the third? Do we know of any other items?
They are proceeding with, my understanding was they are proceeding with state and local primaries. It's just the federal primaries that are getting moved.
Because of their district.
Districts.
Yes. So any, if there's primaries for any local offices, those will proceed. For state offices, those will proceed.
So the gubernatorial would be on the ballot then? Yes, because it has nothing to do with.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, okay.
What did you ask?
The gubernatorial would be on the ballot.
As opposed to the senatorial.
At the same time as this.
Yes.
The only reason I'm asking that is that'll, that would certainly change the number of folks that might be coming out, right? So.
And, you know, it's our hope, as Councilman Scrivens said, this is the constitution for the city of Xenia.
Right.
And we are in a unique position as a home rule city that the citizens get to write their own constitution. Your Charter Review Commission was citizens from the community. They spent two years going through this word-for-word. The Charter Review Commission recommendations, this wasn't city staff, this wasn't city council, this was a group of citizens. I hope, I'm sure the Charter Review Commission would say the same, that all our citizens will get on the city's website, read it. If you have questions, reach out to any of us here at the city. We'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. I would agree. So at this time I will invite any of my colleagues who would care to introduce.
Oh, introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Scrivens. Thank you. Our next item under new business, item four, is resolution 2022-Q. This is an introduction tonight authorizing the purchase of a one-ton dump truck chassis from Stoops Freightliner through the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program, and authorizing the purchase of a beds and salt spreader and a snowplow unit from K.E. Rose Company through the Sourcewell Government Purchasing Program. Mr. Merriman, would you like to go into detail?
Yes, sir, thank you. Staff is requesting authorization to purchase replacement for vehicle number 1915, which is a 2010 model year with nearly 5,000 hours of registered usage. The vehicle's growing maintenance costs and unreliability present a negative return as we've attempted to keep this vehicle roadworthy. Some of the key maintenance concerns were highlighted in your agenda report. This is a frontline vehicle that we use for our cold patching in the wintertime, toes to hot box for our permanent asphalt repairs in the warmer weather. We also routinely use this vehicle for hauling materials to job sites. It's a primary vehicle used to make asphalt repairs in public alleyways and so forth. So again, a frontline vehicle that's used on a, literally a day-to-day basis. Public Service would like to proceed with the acquisition of a replacement vehicle from Stoops Freightliner through the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program. This would be in lieu of any internal bid process, as that's a recognized competitive bid process. This would be purchased at a cost not to exceed $8,683. We were informed by Stoops Freightliner that this particular chassis that we are looking at was originally ordered by another jurisdiction, but that purchase contract has fallen through. Thus, we are the recipient of fortunate timing pending your approval that we can acquire this vehicle relatively, I mean, almost immediately. Outside of that, the anticipated delivery time right now is about two years. So this is a really advantageous opportunity for us. The bed, salt spreader, and snowplower units needed to equip the new chassis would be purchased via Sourcewell Purchasing Program. Again, that is another competitive bidding process, as approved by council. And that would be from K.E. Rose Company, a local company here in our community. That's an amount of $61,200. The 2022 final appropriations ordinance included $115,000 for the replacement of the vehicle, which is less than the current competitive bids as described. Therefore, there are insufficient funds to cover the purchase, and that led to the item in your ordinance earlier this evening, which was authorized. So again, we had budgeted $115,000. The total purchase price with the accessories is $141,883. That difference, as suggested by the Finance Director, is pretty much the cost of the backlog, inflation, all the things that we've all been experiencing over the past year, year and a half here, that we anticipate actually will probably get worse. So that's the, really the reason for the increase. Because this is available, as we have planned for this replacement this year, given council's approval of the funding, we're ready to go. If you're ready to greenlight us this evening, we are requesting introduction of the resolution that would authorize the purchase.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for our city manager?
Uh.
Or Mr. Berger, if he's here today?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Berger, please. Thank you, sir, for procuring this bid. What do you think the lifetime of this vehicle is?
This particular vehicle?
The one we're going to acquire.
We tried to shoot for at least getting 10 years, but as the city manager stated right there, and as I put in the agenda report, this thing takes a lot of beating. And that beating is a good thing.
It's worked over, right, right.
So this one, you know, I would just, if you asked me for, to give you a number, I would say if we get seven years out of it, given what its daily tasks are right there, I think we're doing pretty well.
Now, is it any aftermarket for the truck that will be taken out of service?
Well, I think our, I think we've had pretty good luck of recent with an auction. So I, obviously, you know, last couple of years in particular, we've tried to get rid of stuff that we no longer need.
Tried to unload it, okay.
Absolutely. So I think the success we've had recently with the auction could be the best.
Good. So it would still have some salvage value then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Any other questions? All right, at this time I'll seek an introduction.
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Our next item under new business is an administrative motion. This is appointing a representative to the Green County Combined Health District's, Health District's Board of Health. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, sir. The term of one of the city's two appointees to the Green County Combined Health District's Board of Health has expired as of the end of February. Dr. Tamisha Semiac, Xenia Township resident, has expressed her interest and continued willingness to represent the city on the board. However, due to her work commitments and other community commitments, she's communicated a willingness to seat her seat if another qualified individual was interested. We solicited interested parties, and we had potential candidates for the volunteer for this important volunteer position, which is very important to us, that came forward. Of the candidates who expressed an interest to serve on the board, staff is recommending Mr. Marty Larson for appointment. Mr. Larson is currently the CEO of Ascend Innovations, as well as an executive vice president for the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association. Mr. Larson has over 20 years of experience in the hospital and medical administration fields, bachelor's degree in business management from Cedarville, and a master's degree in management from Antioch University-McGregor. Mr. Larson's been a resident of Xenia for over 25 years, raised his family here. And we believe that he is well qualified to serve in this important capacity. I think we've all learned, for better or for worse, that public health plays a role in protecting our community in a variety of ways. And so we are recommending this appointment this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Marty Larson, for quite an impressive resume. At this time, any questions for Mr. Merriman?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scrivens?
I'm fairly impressed with Mr. Larson's resume. However, I will not be supporting his candidacy because he's not here. I will not support anyone who's not coming in person to be appointed. So that's how I operate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. President. So two comments. I've known Marty for 40 years, and boy, I couldn't imagine a better person to have us. And Marty's been a, I know you said he'd been a resident for 25 years, but I believe he grew up here in Xenia. And, I mean, Xenia's his home. So he, this is his community, and he's committed to being here for the rest of his life as well, too. So, but one question I do have is, this is our opportunity to provide someone who represents us on this board. And obviously, there's folks from other municipalities and organizations, probably county commissioners get a representative. I think it would be good, but many times when we place members on these types of boards, we don't get any feedback on a regular basis from them in terms of what's occurring. So I think we're missing out a little bit on, I mean, we can appoint someone we think is a person of character and wisdom, and then allow them to operate out of that without any feedback to us. But I think it would be wise for us to, as we do this appointment, to also ask Marty if he can provide, and I'm not saying that necessarily has to be a person, but when you, as he goes to the board meetings and they make decisions, if there could be some type of channel for us to get some feedback from him about items that are being decided on at the board. And if we have another health crisis like we've had the last two years, that there's also perhaps a channel where we could meet with him and express concerns that we have from a municipality perspective, where he would be our voice at that board.
Yeah, I think the other thing that we could probably do, we do get copies of, copies are made publicly available of the minutes and action items that go before the board. That's something that we can forward and make available to the council if you so choose. I don't know that we've ever done that in the past, per se, that I can remember. But again, those are public records that are publicly available, and it gives you some insight as to the activities of the board, and we could certainly help facilitate providing that.
Right. So it'd be good to get the minutes, but I think it would be nice if we could ask Marty to give us a brief summary coming back. And one of the reasons I'm bringing that up is when the county commissioners at one of their more recent meetings, they do the same type of thing. They appoint folks probably to 10, 12 different boards or commissions. And I think they also discuss with the fact that in the past, they've made these appointments, and they haven't had any vehicle to get feedback from their representatives on these boards. And they've made a request here for the last couple of board appointments, that the folks provide them at least a summary in terms of the items that are being discussed at those boards. So.
Yeah, but again, we have two members, too, so that is something that we can maybe discuss with both of them, whether that's, you know, some type of maybe quarterly conversation with my office, and I can convey that, or what might be a good mechanism.
Sure.
But David Thompson is our other, our other board member.
Great. And I think we also need to help them understand that if there's something that is concerning them, that's occurring there, that they have an open door to come back and discuss that with us as well as a municipality, right? And that doesn't have to just weigh on them, that we would be very interested in understanding that as well.
My only concern with this whole situation, and it is the fact that, you know, we continue to test Brent with more and more jobs and go-dos. I think like if it directly, you directly want to have that contact, maybe Michelle could just provide the email or that person's contact information to cut out.
Well, I'm not saying Brent has to do that. As a matter of fact, since this is a board appointment, I would prefer that we have those discussions directly with the board, not necessarily with you, right?
With the, you mean with the appointees?
With the appointees. In terms of the feedback, I would much prefer that they sent that to us, right? And if you need to, I'll have a discussion with, I know both those guys very well, and I can sit down and have a discussion and work that out. Brent, you don't need to do that. I mean, we're big people, we can do that here.
Yeah, I think that's up to the discretion of the, you know, the council, exactly how you want to handle it. We'll adjust either way.
Sure. So, Mr. Schre, yeah, I'm, once again, I'm in favor of the individual, but with your leeway, I'd like to go discuss this with him and figure out a method that we can get some feedback from both of them on this.
I'd just like to make sure the feedback comes to all of us.
Yes, yeah, not to just, yeah, with all of us ought to be getting that feedback from them.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And so, noted, I know Councilman Scrivens disappointment, sometimes our candidates are not here in person. And I do know, as a employer and as a business professional, meetings are sometimes very difficult for people to always attend due to professional obligations or vacations, maybe family commitments. So I can totally understand that Mr. Larson is not here tonight, and it would be a pleasure to meet him. So at this time, I will accept a motion to appoint Mr. Larson to Green County Combined Health District Board of Health as our representative.
Move.
Moved by Mayor Mays. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice President Urschel. Further discussion. All right, at this time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
No.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Lieutenant Carey?
Thank you. Last, under new business is an administrative motion to approve the scheduled bills tonight in the amount of $251,000. Mr. Duke?
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing specifically to highlight on the bills this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke regarding our scheduled bills tonight? And so this will be the format we should expect then.
No, actually, this is, this is the same format as what it was in.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. I didn't have to.
Yeah, this is the same format as what it was in in the last, in the last meeting. Actually, today, today was the very first time I had an opportunity to get into the record writer and spend some time figuring out how to operate in that new software. So, yeah, you will have a schedule of bills that's a little more friendly to the eyes in the future. It's hopefully not 15 pages. I know Michelle doesn't appreciate the length of this document. So we'll try to shorten it up, make it a little easier for everybody to read and to follow. So you'll see some changes to it here, if not the next meeting, certainly before, yeah, certainly within the next month. It'll be updated.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to pay the bills, please?
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Please.
All right, roll call, please.
Vice President Urschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Lieutenant Carey?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is appointed officials' reports. So tonight I'll start with Mr. Duke.
I have nothing else for you this evening.
Thank you. Who has comments or questions for Mr. Duke? Nope, you're off the hook. Thank you. Madam Law Director?
I just wanted to share with council, in case you did not see the news, on Tuesday, Governor Dline did appoint our new judge, David McNamee, will be joining us as the Xenia Municipal Court Judge effective April 11th. He's currently serving and has served as a magistrate in both the Juvenile Division and the Domestic Relations Division of the Kamau Police Court. He does have court administrator experience. We've had musical chairs with our judges here for the past couple of months. It's taken a toll on our department. I know it's taken a toll on the court. So we are really looking forward to getting him on board.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for our Law Director this evening?
Mr. President, yes. Dette, could we, after it gets in place, or maybe even before, since he's local, I think it would be good for us maybe to have a time for us as the city to sit down and welcome him?
I'm actually doing that.
Well, the one thing I was going to suggest is maybe he comes in and introduces himself. Conversations I've had with staff, I think we need to give him at least a month to kind of acclimate himself to what's going on over there before we have those conversations.
He reached out to my office, or to me, and to Michelle.
Your office?
He did.
Good.
He did.
Good.
Plus me.
Your mailbox?
It did. I called it my office. And asked if he could meet with myself and with Mr. Merriman. So we are going to be meeting next week.
Okay.
Did at least get that ball rolling. I agree, he needs to come and meet with more and to get to know what's going on. But it is a place to start, and we will be meeting on Tuesday.
Mr. President, if I may, we will, of course, as the new judge, as Dinet said, gets himself acclimated, we will, of course, take time to familiarize him with our budget process, a lot of the internal operating procedures, among the finance director, law director, and myself. But I think Mr. Urschel has a good point that perhaps, you know, even after the mayor and I would meet with him, as he, you know, is a few months into office, maybe there's an opportunity for contention from council to talk about some policy issues. As the law director and I have discussed, there are some opportunities looking at drug court or environmental court types of arrangements where we could take some matters that are important to council policy-wise, take it off the primary docket, and move it into a magistrate's docket where it might be handled in a manner that would seek a better outcome ultimately and reduce some of the volume on the main docket. So there's some good opportunities here. I think it's a good proactive way of trying to align the adjudicative process with the policymaking process legislatively that council's pursued in the front end. So it's a good idea.
Right. And I think it's good for him to hear from us, especially as we're working on specific items in the city, and we have issues with code inspection and code issues. Obviously, a whole series of things that we'll move in from, you know, from a non-felony perspective into his court to get a perspective as to how he'll be handling those, or how he tends to handle those type of things. Because there's that linkage between what we're tending to pursue in the city side and whether the municipal court will receive that on their side, right? So I'd just like to have a time for us to discuss that and understand that with him as well. And then also, just so the public understands, so all the court employees outside of the judge are employees of the city of Xenia. The judge and the clerk?
The judge appoints the clerk of courts, he appoints the bailiffs, he appoints the probation officers.
No, no, I understand. Yeah, he appoints those, but they are our employees from a pay personnel perspective?
No, not all of them. The clerk of, by statute, the clerk of court sets the salary for the deputy clerks.
Sure.
Council sets the salary for the clerk of courts only if, and I would assume this happens everywhere, the court does not bring in as much as it expends. In that case, council sets those salaries. But most of the other salaries are set by the judge.
No, I didn't mean that we have the right to set that. I understand that. But in terms of their, the funding of the municipal court personnel is funded by the municipality of Xenia.
Yes, there are some funding, salary funding he can do out of the court's special projects funds, but by statute, that's somewhat limited. But yes, they are paid by the city of Xenia.
Correct. And the operation of the facility that he resides in is managed by the city of Xenia.
Yes.
And practically speaking, the administrative functions, be they payroll, be they other finances related, be they.
Are supported by the city of Xenia.
Yep, insurance, all of that is under the city. Now, recognizing that we're only a portion of the judge's district, it's a much larger district geographically and slightly larger population-wise, but.
But we're the only municipality that has a funding line for the court.
Well, and the county does pay a portion of the judge's salary, the clerk of court salary, and the bailiff's salary.
Correct.
Under statute. So the county does share those three salaries with us.
Right, right. So the reason I'm bringing that up is that that court is a significant portion of our budget and a significant portion of our personnel that we have. And that one individual has a lot of influence over both of those items. So, sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else for law director tonight? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is our city manager.
Couple items this evening. First, the calendar's changed over to spring officially, and with spring in Ohio, we always run the risk of severe weather. And so we are encouraging folks to pay attention. Our forecast already this week, we've seen our area dodging some bullets and regions around us not quite as lucky. So we are encouraging folks to be weather-aware all the time. Lots of opportunities through your cell phones with weather apps that are free of charge to make yourself aware. And we, of course, are always vigilant in monitoring weather conditions, but are much more so this time of year, so that we can take proper steps to keep our citizens safe. To that effect, I did want to address, yesterday, in fact, we had severe weather in our area, not in the city of Xenia proper, but to our southeastern flank. Under the current system in place, through our Consolidated Dispatch Center, we have responsibility through the center for, that was almost on cue as the rain started, so that we could hear in-house. We do have responsibility for launching tornado sirens for various jurisdictions within our dispatch region. The tornadic activity spotted on radar yesterday was nowhere near Xenia proper, but of course, our local tornado sirens did sound. And I want to reassure our public and council that this is a vestige of the past, a carryover from when the National Weather Service would issue a severe thunderstorm warning or tornado warning, and it went to a whole county. As their system has been updated with modern technology, they now can use what we call polygon warning systems, where they will create an area, some type of polygon based on the trajectory of a storm. Our system, and our system is not unlike other counties, has not caught up with that system yet. We have begun the process of evaluating what will be necessary to be able to localize launching those tornado sirens much more effectively than what we can do today. That unfortunately is a little more complicated than it sounds like, because it's data coming in from weather service that has to translate through our system with some operator input in the dispatch center so that we're properly sending it out. That's going to be a bit of an expensive venture, but we think it's necessary so that we can properly warn those need to be warned and not, you know, not freak people out, so to speak, that don't need to be scared. So again, I want to let council know that's something we're working on. It's going to take a little bit of effort. Another point to bring up with that, we will need to work with our neighboring jurisdictions who participate in that program. My feeling, I believe the feeling of council is that while that's appropriate, we have to take some responsibility for that. The city of Xenia should not necessarily be saddled with the expense of having to pay for that system conversion. So we'll be going back to some of the adjoining townships and communities and asking for some financial participation as we seek to get that aligned. Believe it or not, I think the estimate that fire chief gave me, we're into six digits to get that accomplished. So it's not an inexpensive venture. So with that, I also wanted to update council, one of the responsibilities that I have is, as chief executive for our jurisdiction, is attending once annually the Green County Combined Health District Advisory Board. We were just talking about the Board of Health, which is a different entity. The advisory board, our primary responsibility is approving the annual budget for the combined health district. So I joined other chief executives as well as township representatives for that meeting last week. There was a report out on scope of service delivery from the past year. Numbers, of course, are very skewed given the sort of back half of the pandemic that the health district was dealing with. There are some interesting numbers as it relates to certain service delivery, disease-related service delivery in our jurisdiction. I think there's some follow-up questions to have with our counterparts at the health district to explore some of that and see if we can understand causality a little bit. I have information on service delivery rendered to our community and throughout the county. If you're interested, I can provide copies of that information for you. But again, it's a pretty standard meeting. I think they do a great job. But again, if you have any information on their budget or services rendered, I can certainly provide that. And that is all I have this evening.
All right. Thank you. Any comments, questions for Mr. Merriman?
Brent, what is their annual budget?
I meant to have that packet with me, so I take some questions and it's sitting in my desk.
A first order of.
I, please do not hold me to this. If I recall correctly, I think it's in the $8 million range. They get a lot of money from the state. We have a local formulary in Green County that's in part population-based, so there are some tax dollars that go directly from our jurisdiction. But it's, you know, it's a fairly sizable budget.
Thank you. Mayor? All right. Next is reports of boards, commissions, and committees. We have two tonight. Our first is Public Safety Committee, scheduled to meet on St. Patrick's Day, March 17, and that is chaired by Councilman Scrivens.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was detained momentarily that day because of a medical appointment. Councilwoman Dean, the vice chair of the committee, was there. And Councilman Urschel, he sits on the committee. Like to bring Mr. Holloway forward here. He does our agenda. There are at least nine action items on the agenda. Quite a few of them we're not ready to really come forward with, but just want to give you an update. The SOFA program, the chief was there. Thank you. The chief of the fire was there, and we're doing some things on public safety that next month we'll be able to tell you more about. Mr. Holloway, you want to elaborate on what we can elaborate on?
Yeah, so there's a lot of discussion just about recruitment and retention and turnover concerns of public safety across the board. There was an update on the police chief, transition plans, update on Station 32, update on fire inspection fees and that process, the dispatch conversations, updates to things there. Yeah, so not a ton of vote, I don't think they voted on anything for approval or finalization, but a lot of updates across the board on public safety.
So a lot of topics are under consideration and deliberation, and by next month, we'll have some determinations on things that are going on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone have anything for public safety? All right. Next is Board of Zoning Appeals, and that was scheduled to meet on March 21. That is chaired by Councilman Branham.
BZA met on Monday. We re-elected Tara McDuff as vice chair. And we heard one case that was BZA 2022-01, variance request to allow residential occupancy of a non-conforming single-family home adjacent to an existing auto repair garage in the B3 General Business District filed by Dusty Adams for the property located at 709 Home Avenue. That did pass. I just want to give a shout out to Dustin. He's doing a phenomenal job around town with updating some dilapidated buildings throughout the city. I had the pleasure of stopping, not stopping by, but pulling into the parking lot of that building and just seeing the amount of work that he's put into it and realizing, hey, this building looked like a trash heap before, and now it looks, you know, looks so much more presentable, very similar to what he did across the street from Nick's Restaurant as well, with the building that had a bunch of trash piled up in it and everything else. So he's making a difference in the town.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone have anything regarding BZA for Councilman Branham? All right. Thank you for that report. Next is council comments, and we'll just go ahead and start with Councilman Branham.
Um, thank you. You threw me off by going this direct.
Sorry. I got back to you in eight seconds.
No, I don't think I've got anything else to add.
All right. Thank you. If you do, just raise your hand. All right. So sure. On our left is Councilwoman Dean.
I don't have anything to add tonight.
Thank you. Also, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Few things. I attended the Fireman's banquet there last week. It was an extraordinary occasion. Glad to see that we can honor our own. Our people do extraordinary things. It's time we let everybody know how good they are. So personally, I'd like to congratulate everyone who received an award and the ones who didn't receive an award. Wait till next year. So I want to thank the fire chief for taking the leadership in there. As you may or may not know, the congressional, the senatorial and the gubernatorial debates are to be held at Central State University next week, on Monday and Tuesday. On Monday morning, I think at 11:30 is the Democrat Senatorial Debate, and then in the evening, if I'm not mistaken, is the Republican Senatorial Debate. That's on Monday. And I guess the Democrats will debate on Tuesday for a governor, but I understand that the governor is demurred. I guess they don't poll enough for him to take his time to debate with. Want to also say that Clark State Community College is going to have a dedication this coming Monday at 4:00 p.m. on the fourth floor of 100 South Limestone Street. The room to be dedicated will be in honor of former Sheriff Gene Fisher. I thought that was a very nice gesture of them. Miss, I think it's Tony Overholzer is the Clark State Foundation Director. I think they're sponsoring it. I had one question to ask the law director, should have asked during her time. In terms of parking enforcement, when a designated area is yellow, when is it acceptable to park there?
You mean if the curb is yellow?
If the curb is yellow.
If the curb is yellow, you're not supposed to park there at all.
So there's no parking ever when it's yellow, is that correct?
That's correct.
And do we enforce that, or is that just a nod and a wink?
I think most of the downtown parking, we do have our park enforcement officer. He's out every day as far as outside of that area. It would be whether a police officer is out and sees that or not.
So if theoretically, or hypothetically, if an officer rides by a subject vehicle and the curb is yellow and the vehicle's in park and there's no operator in the vehicle, is that a violation?
Yes, they could stop and write a ticket for that.
Now, what happens if they don't stop to write a ticket? So at their discretion, they can write a ticket or not?
Yes, just like it's their discretion whether or not if they pull you over for speeding, whether they give you a warning or a ticket. I would imagine probably in the winter, if you can't see that yellow, they probably would give the vehicle owner the benefit of the doubt that maybe they don't know there's a yellow curb under there. But if it's visible, yes, they could write a ticket for that.
Did you get ticketed?
No, I didn't. I'm trying to get people ticketed who are visually parking, who are visually parking and our guys are riding by it. Now, I'm paying salaries and pensions, and I don't want them riding by violation, because if it was me, they would have issued me a ticket.
Well, and it may be. I would suggest you have a follow-up conversation with our public safety director, Mr. Merriman, but.
Well, I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee, so at this point, there's going to be some enforcement.
Well, he's in charge of the police division, not the committee. But it could be if that officer is responding to a call, they're not going to have time to stop and write a ticket.
I would understand that. But if they were called directly.
Then that's a conversation you need to have with our public safety director.
Thank you, Madam Law Director. I'll continue, Mr. President. Mr. Public Service Director, at what point in the year do we start crack sealing?
We do not have the contract out for that. We have to reassess because when we're going to do that, and because we did not have the, based upon the grant funds that we need for this year's project, we hadn't dipped into that fund right there because the gas tax revenues were not as high as we were expecting. So it's a whole, you know, it's kind of a domino theory. They didn't say we weren't going to do it, but we just don't have any plans for it yet. But obviously, that's something that we're talking about internally amongst ourselves, and we'll get back to something later on this year.
I'm trusting that we can take some community development block grant money and crack seal and save a few of these streets. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Also, Mr. President, Pancake Day is coming up, sponsored, I think, by the Quanis. It's going to be April the 6th at the Green County Fairground. And as of yesterday, March 23, 2021, the Scrivens family has resided on Lexington Avenue for 99 years. I am one of the last remaining relatives of Alexander Scrivens, who brought him and his family of five boys and one girl from Neenon, Georgia to Xenia, Ohio, to escape the woes of Jim Crow back on March 23, 1923. They arrived at the train station and got a buckboard to now what's known as Lexington Avenue. But back then, I believe the street was still named Buck Town. So we want to say thank you to my grants, and we're still here. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Next would be.